To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all for coming. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
All right. We do have a call this evening. I'll go ahead and move on to public participation. The first item this evening is our audit presentation. So we'd like to invite our auditor down to, or actually, I'll turn it over to Justin, who can do a better job at that.
I'll introduce her. Thank you, President Brawley. Jennifer Martenson with Lauterbach and Amon is here tonight to go through the financial statements with the board. I promise she's not going to go through all 170 pages, so.
No, you're correct. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I specifically want to thank Justin and his team, of course, for all of their hard work during the audit. I know it's kind of year-round preparing for us to come out and make sure everything is clean, and he does a great job of being very organized and making my life easier. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. So I'm just going to briefly go through, as he said, a few of the key highlights. So there are three sections to the audit. You have your introductory section, your financial section, and your statistical section. So within that introductory section, you're going to find a transmittal letter towards the front, which I would encourage you read. It's a nice, non-financial letter, again in management's words, that Justin put together, that has some basic information about the village, the local economy, some big projects for the year. It's a good read to start off the financials. It's very detailed and thorough. Again, Justin did a great job with the transmittal letter. Moving forward, I did want to mention that the village got the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, again, for fiscal year '17, and we do anticipate for fiscal year '18 that the village will again get this award, so congratulations. Next section would be your financial section. So the first few pages will be labeled M-DNA at the bottom. That's management's discussion and analysis. Again, a nice executive summary of the financials. It has some very, like, narrative information of some of the figures in the back. It compares the prior year to the current year. There's just a lot of nice information in there, and again, very detailed and thorough. So Justin did a great job with the M-DNA as well. I like to call it the maybe Cliff Notes version of the audit, if that helps you guys out. It's nice to get into that first before getting into the numbers. Moving past that, you'll start your basic financial statements, and I do just want to note one thing for you. For the general fund, there was unassigned fund balance of $3.6 million, and the village is meeting those fund balance targets. Moving past the financial statements, you'll get into the notes. There's a lot of additional information that's required for the reporting. You'll see your capital asset schedules, as well as your long-term debt summaries, in those footnotes as well. And then further past that is where you'll get into your budget-to-actual statements, so you can see the comparison of the year for your budget versus actual. And then towards the back, which is always kind of exciting, your statistical sections. I know it's saying exciting in your audit presentation probably isn't always something you hear, but I did just want to point this out. On page 140 is where that starts, and that's going to be nice trends of 10 years of financial information. So it's kind of interesting to see those all on one page for those different areas, to see how the village has been doing over the past 10 years. Any questions?
I have a question, if I might. And I don't know if this is for you or if this is for staff, but I believe that the state, or there's some sort of entity that says that, hey, you should have a general fund balance or reserve balance of X amount of dollars, or whatever, or X percent. And I know that we've always been above that, and we've always done really well with that. What is the balance that whatever entity, or what percentage, that whatever entity says that we should have, and what's our actual?
So GFOA is the entity that recommends, it depends, this is not probably the best answer, but it depends. It depends on the size of the government. It depends upon how elastic or not that the revenues are, if the economy's going up and down. If you have sales tax, and that's your main revenue, you're going to want to have a little bit higher. The minimum that they recommend for most governments is 25%. And then, from there, you know, like a city of Chicago, it'd be like 10%. You don't want them to have 25% because that's billions of dollars in the budget there. So ours is roughly, it's been in the mid to high 30s for the last several years, so.
And I'm assuming that if, God forbid, some sort of catastrophe or something, or we needed money, we could dip into that sort of thing and use those, and that's why we have the reserve fund?
Right. That's why we have it. The 25% is three months' worth of activity. So if something came through and, you know, a tornado came through and hit the building or something, and it took a while for us to get back up and running, we have basically three months in the bank that we could depend upon, so.
And over the last few years, with the state and their budget woes, trying to keep that just a little bit higher than the 25 minimum, should they claw back some of their state shared revenues, so.
Thank you.
I will just add on to that, that just so you guys are aware, during our field work, we do testing on that percentage to make sure that you are complying with your policies, so that we would let the board know if there were any issues with that fund balance as well.
Thank you.
If I may, on page 143, under what I believe I'm looking at is franchise fees, the last three years are showing a dash. I wonder if that's moved to a different area, or are you able to see what I'm seeing, rather than an amount?
So, Justin, do you know if the franchise fees are being included elsewhere in that one? I'm not sure off the top of my head. We could definitely, certainly do some research on that.
The numbers at the bottom seem to track okay, but that seems to be an aberration.
I'm going to look into that, Stan. I do not know off the top of my head.
Fair enough.
All right. Any other questions?
I was just going to briefly go over the management letter, then, if there's no other questions. So I did want to mention, too, that we also provide additional communication to the board, just to let you know if there's any disagreements with management, any issues during the audit, uncorrected errors, and I'm happy to say that there were none. The management letter is very short and brief, so I believe these are all prior recommendations. So there were no new recommendations this year. The prior recommendations include GASP-74 implementation, which I believe we discussed with you guys last year, and will work with Justin to make sure that standard gets implemented. In addition, there is just some notes on deficit fund balance, as well as funds over budget that we're required to report to the board.
The recommendations that you've provided in here, and are we following, or are we beginning to implement those recommendations?
So the GASP-74 is not required until next year, so that's more of an awareness, and we'll make sure that that all gets implemented correctly.
Do you have a page number?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the smaller packet that has the management letter. Sorry about that.
Smaller packet.
I did not hand that out.
Sorry. I apologize.
We'll still look surprised, though, when we get it.
Yes. But yeah, so there were no new recommendations, which is great news. But yes, the budget and the fund deficit, you'll see the management responses there. Justin's aware and working through that in his processes. And I know that historically, budget amendments haven't been something that is done here as well, so, which is also a good thing, so.
Awesome. All right.
No other questions? Okay. Thank you for having me.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item B. This evening, we have the public comment. Two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any topic. Is there anybody? Yeah, sure.
I did sign in already. I just wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday, we're going to have our showcase Montgomery tour. So we get a bus. We start out at 8:30 at Village Hall, and we have room for about 26, so I have about nine seats available. We'll be touring several buildings that are vacant, both retail, industrial, and land. It's about a two-hour tour. I did provide a press release if anyone wants the details, and we also provide lunch after the event. And it's a joint venture with community development, and we've been doing it annually, and it always seems to bring something new eventually down the road. Every year that we've had it, we found something that generated from that tour. So anyone that knows somebody, that might be interested in learning more about Montgomery, what development projects we have, or just get acclimated to the community, we'd love to have you. Thank you so much.
All right, seeing no one else. Go ahead and move on to item C, which is a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I've invited trustee Spurling to read that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas since the awareness program began in 1985, mammography rates have more than doubled for women age 50 and older, and breast cancer deaths have declined. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month seeks to increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection and treatment of breast cancer. And whereas many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates that in the United States, more than 230,000 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year, and over 40,000 people will die. And whereas taking advantage of early detection methods such as mammography and clinical breast exams could help the breast cancer death rate drop by approximately 30%. And whereas the American Cancer Society and other organizations continue to search endlessly for a cure through vital research and to reduce the risks of breast cancer through community education. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, village president of Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaims the month of October 2018 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Village of Montgomery, and urges all women and their families to get the facts about breast cancer, support those courageously fighting breast, excuse me, breast cancer, and honor the lives lost to this devastating disease. And I just will add that last month I hit my five-year cancer-free of breast cancer, so I'm still celebrating that.
Congratulations, Dee.
So I'll move to approve the proclamation.
Perfect. Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on. I'll read the consent agenda and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting on September 24th, executive session minutes of September 24th, accounts payable through October 4th, the building report for September, cancellation of our October 16th committee of the whole meeting, and ordinance 1827, granting special use for outdoor use as principal use for JMB Investment Partners LP. That's at 2020 Albright Road. This is second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you. Items for separate action this evening, we have an agreement between the Village of Montgomery and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150, Public Employees Division, and I will turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Rick Ready.
I can handle it. That's fine.
So I won't.
That's okay. Obviously, we have discussed the negotiations with you along the way, getting feedback and direction from you. This is just the culmination of that, and I would just report that the union has ratified this already unanimously. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, just looking for your approval tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
So moved to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you. I will note that the process for both Public Works and Police over the last five years or so, I felt, has gone very smoothly. I think our employees hopefully agree. We come to those agreements quicker. It saves us attorney's fees. It saves the heartache, and also, I kind of think it builds a much better relationship between the entities. So I want to thank everybody here for that and staff. All right, item B. We have resolution 2018-017, authorizing the village's share of construction costs for the roadway improvement of Alcott Road, and this is LFO using federal STP funds.
Oh, that was early. It's me. Thank you, Mr. President. The village has received federal funding for the resurfacing of the Alcott Road LFO project. This project has a 75-25 cost share. The project will be bid on IDOT letting on November 9. Funding for this project will consist of STP and village budgeted funds. Requesting a resolution is needing passage from the village board to authorize the usage of the STP and village funds for construction and construction engineering. If you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them now.
Awesome. Thank you.
This work will take place in spring of '19?
Correct. Pretty fantastic timing, by the way, for this road.
Yeah. Now, will this include also, because I know we talked about some bike path connectivity through that corridor, just strictly the roadway?
At this point, that would be a future project.
Okay. That's the widening of Alcott Road.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. And then item C is kind of along that, professional services agreement with EEI for construction engineering for Alcott Road in the amount of approximately $20,000. Do you have anything else to add on that?
Yeah, I could just, real quick. Requesting that the village board approve a professional service agreement with EEI for Phase III construction engineering. On July 23, the village board approved the master task order with EEI after following the required QBS process. The estimated village contribution for construction engineering for the project will be 25% or $20,000, which is included in the FY '19 budget. The federal STP funds will pick up the remaining 75%.
Awesome. So moved. Second.
Trustee Young, yes, trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
All right. That carries 5-0. And then item D, we have a task order with Lane Christensen for well 15 emergency inspection.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Again, I'm requesting approval for a task order with Lane Christensen for the removal, emergency removal of the pump and motor assembly of well 15. On September 15, this well went offline, and electricians confirmed that the removal is necessary to determine the cause of the failure. Once the inspection is complete, staff will present a second task order to the board outlining additional work that will be needed. The task order processed is in accordance with the 2011 PSA with Lane and the village for well maintenance. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Awesome.
Where's well 15 located?
Right next to the police department.
Okay.
Funny, in the old days, we had motors and wells that were 50 years old. We fixed them and put them back, and here's one of our new ones that, which means they ain't making them like they used to, but I'm glad they caught it.
Did they figure, was it struck by lightning or something, or?
It's, that's the thought process, because this occurred the same night we had those major storms that rolled through. Pretty much right when those storms hit is when we received the alarm that that well kicked out. All the electrical, internal electrical gear and the gear going out to the actual wellhead itself tested fine. When you actually test from that point at the top of the well down to the bottom is where we're having a dead shore. So if we had a ground strike close by, you have, you know, metal casing going in the ground all the way down, something could have happened at that point in time. So until we really pulled the pump, we really have no idea what the...
Crazy, because it could be something relatively minor, but you got to pull the whole thing out to look at it, so.
Correct.
It's unfortunate, but.
It is.
Really important well for the system.
It is a very important well, yes.
All right. Is that a motion?
It'll be. Motion to approve.
Second. All right, call the roll.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes, and I'd like to add that he ain't right. All right, item E this evening is a warrant of contract to NCAP for improvements at village property, which is 1680 Douglas Road, formerly known as the Spats property, in the amount of $46,355.
I'll take that, Matt. The property at 1680 Douglas was acquired by the village several years ago at no cost. It was to be, it's to be used for future stormwater and compensatory storage facilities to facilitate economic development for properties in TIF number one. And the purpose of these improvements is to remove the woody vegetation before the site becomes completely overgrown, and also to provide a buffer for the existing wetlands that are on site, and to put the property in the condition so that it can be maintained for future use when it's needed for a development project, and we need to construct a stormwater detention or compensatory storage facility on that site.
Awesome.
Are they going to cut the, right now it looks like five-foot weeds in that whole section. Do they cut the weeds down and leave the native grasses grow, or what?
Yeah, we'll be cutting the, we'll be avoiding the existing wetlands. We had the wetlands delineated, and it got a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps, and so we won't be disturbing the wetlands at this time, but everything outside of the wetlands, they'll be removing the brush, which is starting to grow up pretty large, and removing the existing vegetation, prepare the seed bed, and then plant wetland buffer, and then the remainder of the site with naturalized vegetation, so it can be maintained through mowing a couple times a year, and then it'll be in a good condition if we need to do a project for, to facilitate a development.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Any other questions or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Turn the page here. Items for discussion this evening, we have requests for TIF funds, and I'll ask Administrator Zoffel to summarize.
Thank you. There was an attached letter in your packet. I believe you had all previously received it individually anyway. We have three companies located together that are requesting TIF funds for a paving project. After staff's review of it, our recommendation would be not to use TIF funds for this purpose. I guess a minor reason would be only one of the businesses is located in the TIF itself. Larger reasons would be, one, the TIF funds are a limited resource that we have, and we like to see them used for larger-scale projects that would benefit the entire area, whether it's a large-scale transportation project or stormwater detention projects we've talked about, rather than what we would consider a maintenance item. That being said, we do like to help our businesses where and when we can, and that's why, as staff, we have encouraged them to pursue the Montgomery Development Fund, whether it would be the forgivable loan program, or if they would like a larger amount, the low-interest loan program, as a way that we could try and assist them. With that, I would be happy to try and answer any questions.
There's four companies there, correct, on our letter?
Although...
The signature line shows four.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if the...
I think one's a building owner and the other one's there, but the same thing with Michael's here. The girl put a lot of money in the building, and really, that's what they fixed was the roof. I don't see any problem with giving each company $10,000 from the, what do you call it?
Development fund?
Grant, the grants, and them use it for, it'd be just the same as if they all wanted signs up there on the side of their buildings. It's the same thing. Or like Tom did here, fix the roof, and she fixed the elevator over at the, I don't see anything wrong with that, where they could use that money to fix it. I don't know whose property the railroad tracks are. Those tracks used to go farther in, and wouldn't that be the railroads problem, or?
The tracks run all the way up to the Midwest Building's docks.
Yeah. But I mean, we, when we drive the buses by, have to stop for that, and the guys get crazy over that because they know it's not used, it's not attached to anything. And they, in fact, the blacktop, I think, is over the tracks in certain parts of that, and it's a dead, it's a deadline. Now, you either put a sign there that said these tracks are not in use, and then buses don't have to stop. But right now, everyone that has fuel or anything else has to stop at that thing, even though the tracks, if you look, once you get into their property, you couldn't drive a train on there, let's put it that way. So I don't know who would, if that's their problem or the railroads, but I wouldn't think it's ours because we didn't, we didn't put them in.
Yeah, and I don't know. One, we could probably look at the, well, we'll have to look at that crossing when we do Alcott Road, but it would prob, it's probably privately owned, I would think. But at any rate, it seems like an appropriate request of the development fund, and less appropriate for the use of TIF funds, seeing that only one of the three entities is in the TIF, and one entity specifically requested to be out of the TIF.
When did, when did the TIF have their last meeting, or how many meetings do they have, and how much money's in that?
The TIF?
The development fund.
What is it?
The development fund?
Yeah. No, I mean the TIF, TIF funds.
It's in December.
January.
Joint, the joint meeting?
Well, okay. Give me the figure on all three. TIF, development, and the...
So the joint review, joint review board for TIF number one and TIF number two, which this is TIF number two over there, they typically meet in December to go over the last year's worth of revenue and expenses and all that. Don't know the exact amount, but it is around $400,000 in the TIF right now. And then, in the Montgomery Development Fund, right now, there's about $1.45 million, so $1,450. That board meets as needed. The last time we met was when we approved the forgivable loan to 109 North Main over here, which was, I think, maybe two, two and a half, three months ago, so.
All right. What did 109 North Main, refresh my memory, please. What did they do?
So, and I think...
It wasn't the roof?
Yes.
They used it for the roof?
Yeah, it was.
Yes. On the building, on the one-story building. They did not use it on the two-story building at all.
I don't have my letter.
It's in the packet.
My packet's in my car. How much was the petitioner asking for originally, or the petitioners?
Well, yeah, and I'm curious about that, because I saw the letter, and we got the letter.
It says, "Such improvements may cost around $100,000. It can be done this fall." I'm assuming you guys are the petitioners up there? Could you come down? A couple questions, please? I guess my first question is that if the rail spur is removed, and say, at some point in the future, you do something with that property, does the removal of the rail spur hurt your property value, or is it in such bad condition that it?
The rail spur is in such bad condition that it needs to be removed.
Okay. That was my first question. And then, the other thing, I'm, I agree with President Brawley's comments on the TIF funds, because only one of the businesses is in the TIF, and one of them expressly stated that they wanted to be out of the TIF. I don't think TIF funds are on the table, and I don't think TIF funds are a good use for this sort of thing. But I like Denny's comments, and, you know, either a forgivable loan or a grant, I have no problem with. I know that a lot of the things that we, and the money... I know that a lot of the things that we, and the monies that we grant and we give out and stuff, is to bring in new business, but we've also got this, this part of business retention and helping the businesses that are already in Montgomery. And so I think that's a good idea that Denny has.
And improving the value of the-
Correct.
The land or the building, so that this user or a future user can benefit from it.
Now, would we dovetail, and this is probably more towards Tim, the Ockott Road resurfacing project? If we're gonna talk about removing the spur that's on their property and it crosses the public right-of-way, would we be able to coordinate that so that we could remove that spur? We don't pave, pave around it or, you know, do our work and then they pull it out, and now we gotta repave the spur again.
Before you answer that, to tag on to your question, is if we are able to do that, does that decrease the potential cost to them for the removal of the?
I don't think they would be responsible for the removal of spur across the public right-of-way. I can't imagine that they would be.
So it's just, we're just concerned, right now, we're just concerned about the rail spur on your property itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
I just hate to see when we, you see towns and-
Right.
States do this, where we lay down new roadway, and we've done a great job in the last several years with Public Works, with planning for that, that we put off repairing the road until we replace the water main that's on the schedule, as opposed to repairing the road, and then ripping it up two years later to fix the main. So I just want to make sure we can try to, whatever the resolution is, whatever the timeline is, to come to resolution. And I can feel your pain, we just resurfaced our parking lot at work, and it was- Sure. -over $100,000 to do our four buildings.
Yeah, basically, this roadway serves about 400 people that work among the businesses and so forth. In Midwest, we contribute revenues of about $10 million that are sales taxable, that come back to the city of Montgomery from the state of Illinois. And, you know, we just thought this would be something that, with the TIF fund, and TIF funds are supposed to help businesses and so forth, something that we would, you know, see what, you know, your feelings were.
And of the three? Well, there's, there's four listed.
Yeah, he's, he's the one that's-
The fourth one listed is one of our tenants. We actually have additional space in our facility that we rent. And currently, we do have some vacant space that, again, repairing this roadway and taking out that defunct railway would also entice more people to be able to want to rent some of this additional space that we have. So it kind of serves twofold for us, where it also makes our property more, you know, valuable to someone that might want to then have business in Montgomery.
Definitely makes it more marketable.
So it's like, you know, the double-edged, you know, guarantee for us.
Yeah, and this is, this is the one that's in the TIF. Yes.
Yes, we're in the TIF.
And there comes the quandary of the trilogy.
Correct.
And two people are out and one is in.
Correct.
It makes it, and I, I agree, I'm not sure the TIF funds are intended for maintenance type items like this, but again, and I sit on that Montgomery Development Loan Fund Committee, and this would be a good place for application, it would be a great application for the low-interest loan program. This is exactly what it's designed for, to help businesses get over that hurdle when it's something surmountable, and this is. So, thank you guys for being here in town, we appreciate that very much. And I've, in the last several weeks since I received the first letter, this letter, I've been through the parking lot three or four times and gone through during rainstorms and stuff, and, yeah, I'm gonna borrow your Jeep. Because it's, it's pretty rough.
It definitely needs work.
Yeah, it definitely needs some-
There's also some problems there that we didn't bring up, but every time it rains, there's like a lake that forms in the middle of the parking lot and so forth, and that's because of the problems with the sewer system and so forth. And there's supposed to be some sort of receptors that the city's supposed to look into about maybe opening up or something like that to allow the water to drain better.
And we can look at that, if there's something in the area that we own and operate-
Increasing the restrictor plate size?
That sounds, that sounds right. That, you know, the restrictors can be increased to help with flow, maybe?
Especially back by Bruce, he's, he gets a lot way in the back, and you're the treasurer of the company, I think, so you would know if you want one of the loans we have, the payback loans, is, what, how many percent is that?
It is 75% of the current Fed funds rate, which, right now, is probably a little bit over 3%. I'm trying to do the math in my head, but.
Sure.
Okay.
If, and I'm, I'm asking a question here, is if we give each, each entity a $10,000 for grant, for lack of a better term, can they also go for the, for the loan?
And I don't want to get ahead of it, but I believe-
They can?
And Justin can, Director Van Vorn can confirm, but it would be three separate applications, because there's still an application process. We don't just rubber stamp and say, here's a check for $10,000. Now, there's an application process, there's a process to all of it. And then, the forgivable loan program is just that. It's a loan that we have the ability to forgive based on several pieces of criteria. And if you don't, if the business is gone within three years, I think that's the timeline, the loan becomes callable. It's owed back to us. So it's, it's not just a gift, it's based on longevity and cycling, because again, this, we have a finite amount of funds to allow to continue to keep, to grow and regenerate themselves, so that we can continue to do this and help into the future. So the, and then there's a loan process for the actual forgivable loan, and I'm not sure how you all worked that out. I was wondering about that, with three businesses sharing a parking lot slash, I call it kind of a parking lot roadway, because it's almost like a road. It, it's a parking lot for you guys, but it's a road for La Conne.
Correct, and Aurora Bearing, they also have a back-
It's their dock.
To get through to where their docks are, and then some additional parking as well.
Yeah, so how that works with the loan program, and how you guys divvy up those funds, and what, who's responsible for how much and all that, I think all gets worked out with staff, but I, I think that the forgivable loan program is a perfect application for this. I completely see that.
How would we go about getting any of the paperwork?
I can actually, I'll get your email address and I'll send the information over to you.
We have, we have been working with Rich.
Okay, yeah. If Rich has your information, then-
He has our information.
I'll send it through him.
I've emailed him a lot.
I, I think there's a solution that can be found here, and we can figure something out.
That would be wonderful.
Appreciate it.
Awesome.
Has anyone tendered an estimate to you as to what it would cost to remove the railroad track?
We're still working on it, but-
We, we have been in contact with EEI as well, I've spoken to one of their associates, as well as Burlington Northern, I've been in contact with them as far as who owns what, who's responsible for what. And I think we're still kind of hammering out responsibility levels currently, but it was originally, can't think of the term off the top of my head, but granted to the original gentleman that built our building. And it just got assumed into us, although we never had a copy of it, and any of the paper we had from the purchase of the property. So we are in process of trying to get some of that original documentation.
But the actual cost of removing the railroad track, we'll have to double-check that, but I believe it could be maybe 30,000 to 40,000.
And do you have a-
And there's a track that goes like, from the railroad across the street, and then it goes up to Aurora Bearing and then around our building as well.
So it spurs within the spur?
Like a Y-type thing.
And if there's stuff in the Ockott Road right-of-way that we can do research on, it's, I see that as important to us to try and figure out the portion that's in the right-of-way, whether or not we own that, or, I don't know how that would work, honestly, and that may be helpful information for you. I think what they, kind of to summarize, there's a willingness to, to definitely work with you, we appreciate you as an employer in our community, and, you know, as a business owner in the community as well, I understand that. We need to be cognizant and responsible with the TIF funds, you know, plain and simple, but also we do have the, the grant and the low-interest loan program. I think you'll find that there's a lot less red tape and can be quicker, maybe possibly to meet your, your deadline to try and get this resurfaced this year, or if you do it in the spring. But we would, we don't decide that initially here at this board. The loan committee would meet rather quickly, assuming we have your application, and assuming that you want to go that route, and would recommend it to this board quickly afterwards. So it'll, it should be a quick process. But yeah, you can continue to work with Rich and Justin on that, and hopefully that, hopefully that's a process that would work for you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate any help we can get.
Alright, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, or is there any new unfinished business?
I have one item. This Sunday at the police station, from 10:00 to 2:00, I believe, are the correct hours, is the Halloween safety event, which has grown immensely. Sergeant Pelco and staff over at the fire, at the police department have worked tirelessly putting this together, and this year it's gonna be a different location. It's still at the PD, but it's actually right by well number 15. So if anybody'd like to come out to the Halloween safety event, they can inspect well 15. It pays well, apparently, to do that. But it's gonna be on that property, the 10-acre parcel that's just adjacent to the police station, just because of the location, the amount of people that have been coming out and being involved, and we're now working and partnering with Fox Valley Park District. There's gonna be a touch of truck portion of it now, so it's gonna, there's a little cul-de-sac back there behind the Sally Port at the police station, and there's gonna be a touch of truck in there, and then concessions from the Fox Valley Park District will also be open for sale, so people could have, have something to eat if they'd like. Because we're not doing hot dogs this year. Previous, it's just become a little too much, honestly. The decision was made beyond my scope, but it's, there was 1,000 kids there last year, and we literally head down for the entire time doing nothing but serving one hot dog after the other, as fast as you could possibly keep up, and it, you couldn't keep up. So the decision was made to eliminate that, especially with the relocation, because we don't have access to running water, we don't have some of the health department requirements met to be in that location. So that event's gonna be Sunday, it's a great time. Deputy Chief Sanders is gonna be there doing storytime with the kids.
Will you be in costume, sir?
I will be in costume, and Doug, thank you for reminding everybody that it is a free event for everyone as well.
Awesome.
Treats, prizes, and safety tips for the kids, so, great event, so hopefully everyone